Welcome to the October 4th, 2018 Issaquah City Council Land and Shore Committee. I am Stacey Goodman, the Chair, and to my right is Council President Tole Martz, and to his right is Councilmember Victoria Hunt, who is filling in tonight. Hi Keith.
Hi Stacy.
We have three items on our agenda. The first one is the Central Issaquah Monitoring Report and Dashboard. Second one is Agenda Bill 7326, Old Town Subarea Plan Update. And the third item is Agenda Bill 7661, Proposed Amendments to Central Standards, Table 4.3b, Permitted Land Uses. And just so everybody knows who's here in the audience, who is one person right now, that we will allow for audience comments after each item. We don't have any, we're just being presented the Central Issaquah Monitoring Report and Dashboard, but I certainly would like to give the public an opportunity to comment if they would like to. So with that, we'll start with the first item, and here to present is Kristin Leeson, Senior Planner.
Good evening.
Evening.
So this is the Central Issaquah Monitoring Report and Dashboard. It was recently posted on the website and was sent to the entire council. This is a report that we, we have an annual report and a three-year report, and they include slightly different things. This is an annual report that we've done this year. The report itself is 29 pages long, so I am going to give a very, very brief highlight of what's in there, and then I'm going to let you all ask any questions that you may have. So you may recall that during 2017, there was a development moratorium, and so that means that very few projects, few new projects were submitted and added to the monitoring report this year. There were some firsts, though. This was the first time that density, I always get it backwards, density bonus was used, and it was used on the Vail property, the Vail Apartments. First time affordable housing units are under construction, that's also with the Vail property. We got our first mixed-use building, which is Gilman Lofts. It has both commercial and office, which is considered to be mixed-use. And we had more impact fees collected this year than in the previous years combined. So we had just over 8 million collected this year, 8.8. And so far, we have collected 10.6 million total. So residential units, we only count what has actually been completed and not what has been permitted, because even if a building permit has been issued, it may be four years or five years before any construction starts. So we only count what's been completed. So what was completed this year was Atlas with 344 units. There are obviously many others that are in the pipeline and under construction, which may be included in the completed list next year. Included in that are the 10 affordable units with Vail. Commercial square feet, almost 300,000 square feet, that all came from the Marriott Suites, Spring Hill Suites, that were constructed over on Maple. And almost 500,000 are in the pipeline. A lot of that comes from the Costco expansion that is being proposed currently. 84 jobs were added. You may note in the report, under the commercial, it says that only 77 jobs are added, however, Atlas added seven jobs. So next year, we will amend the tables to try and add those jobs into that. And then we have about 1,500 more jobs that are coming up. Again, most of those are from Costco. The last one you have, this is smaller than I thought it was, I apologize. I can't make it any bigger. This just shows where our impact fees have gone. So we've collected approximately 3.6, 3.7 million dollars in transportation slash impact fees, that name changed in 2016, and $327,000 in bike ped mitigation fees. And you can just see in the table in there where what has been identified in the CIP, how many impact or mitigation fees will be needed, and then what has actually been committed in the budget for '27. And actually, we included 2018 in here as well. That is all I have. So like I said, so much to talk about. I thought I'd pull out the highlights, and there may be other things that you all want to know about.
I think one of the questions I have is, on the first page, there were, on the executive summary, it said, "As you read the report, consider what Central Issaquah was in 2012, what we have gained, what we have lost. Consider whether the results you are seeing are leading us to what is envisioned for Central Issaquah. If not, are there code revisions, aside from those made during the moratorium that should be considered by the administration?" And so Kristin, as you mentioned, it's a thick report. There's a lot of numbers. And so my question is kind of these questions back to staff and the administration. What kind of evaluation and analysis has been done, or is planned to be done, to help answer these questions?
You know, are you, do you want me to try and answer that now?
Well, you or Keith? That really was, because I, you know, I don't, I think they're great questions, and I certainly don't feel like I'm equipped to start that kind of analysis and come to Land and Shore and answer those questions. So that's, that was the biggest question I had about the report.
So I think, you know, a lot of, a lot of the amendments that were done during the moratorium helped address some of those. The parking, the mixed-use, we weren't getting mixed-use, so we did that. The parking was surface parking, we fixed that. Affordable housing, you know, we now have inclusionary zoning, which should help to address that as well. You know, something that's come up is that we're getting so much housing, all this housing, is that really what we want? Well, that was the original intent, is, or part of the original intent, at least, was that, you know, you, we didn't want, we needed to figure out where our new growth targets were going to go, and we didn't want them up on the hillsides, and we didn't want to expand the urban growth boundary. So yes, we're getting a lot of housing, but at the same time, that's what we wanted, and that produces an actual mixed-use in that area, so that there are more residents to support the businesses that are there.
So maybe my question is more along the lines of, are we, is this a useful, are we making this document, this monitoring report that we do, separate reports every year, and then a different type of report every three years? Are we, is it useful, are we making it useful? And maybe that's a question for Keith, I don't know.
So I think, I mean, so that question is more qualitative. It's more, you know, are we, are the projects that are coming in meeting the vision, are, you know, we spend a lot of time on updating the visions. You know, I think we're going to need to get some projects actually constructed. Costco was at DC last night. They approved their land plan for their new building and their new parking garage. There was a lot of compliments to the architecture of that building. They did go through, they were not, because they have a development agreement, they were not required to use the city's architectural consultant, but they elected to. And they mentioned specifically last night that they thought that that was very additive to the quality of the building that they're, they're bringing forward. So I think we're hopeful that we've made some adjustments that will put us in a better place, but I think we're going to need to wait and see what comes. At this point, besides Costco, there's really not a lot of projects in Central that are on their way. You know, the other thing is Gilman Lofts. Gilman Lofts also had to go through an architectural review. That was part of the development agreement we did with them. So they will break ground this spring. So there is a couple of things coming, I think, will, part of what we need to do, and maybe what needs to be incorporated into the report, is some form of community feedback on fit, because I don't think that's part of it now.
So in our packet, or in the dashboard, there's a slide that's about the, that has a graph of residential units. It's slide 10, labeled 10.
In the dashboard or in the monitoring report?
I think it's in the dashboard.
Okay.
That's the one.
Okay.
Okay, so, so on slide 10. One that has the residential, has residential units and jobs.
This one?
Yes. So I was wondering, go ahead, just go right.
I just, you changed to the urban, did you want urban core?
Urban core or Central Issaquah?
Oh, okay.
Well, you know what, I should go online and pull up the other one. This one, this one, it's, I pulled up the one with the funny layout.
This is the one that I had a question about, so.
Okay.
Okay. So for residential units, so we have growth housing units, but not in the urban core, and the target for the urban core is quite high. And so, and then also for jobs, and you mentioned that Costco, for the trend line for jobs right now, Costco contributed a lot of the jobs. And Costco is doing their expansion, so I expect that will be sort of a one-time increase, and then after that, there, there will be more jobs, but that is sort of, I think, artificially inflating the jobs that we've seen, or might not be the basis of a long-term trend. So I wonder, I wonder if what is, with this graph, with the very high target, what is being done to achieve or change, or what you would expect to see change in terms of the target for residential units in the urban core?
The target or the capacity? Because the target is 2,500 for the urban core, and the capacity is just over 7,000 for the urban core, or 7,750 for the Central Issaquah. So I guess that's what's remaining in the purple.
Okay.
But are you talking about all the Central Issaquah or the urban core?
Well, I think for this one, I was talking about the urban core.
The urban core.
And about, yeah, about the trends in the urban core and.
Okay. Well, the vertical, Keith may be able, the vertical mixed-use is located in the urban core, and you're required to do mixed-use. So that should help to get some housing in there. We also have potentially the transit-oriented development coming in, which would have another 500 units, which would help increase, what, increase what's in the urban core. Trying to think of any other.
So it's going to take a while, I think is the answer. You know, I think as we see certain projects come in, you know, and add density, you know, the hope is that the jobs and the residences kind of play off each other, and we have kind of increased density overall. We have, you know, the Regional Growth Center designation that we adopted for the urban core, you know, puts those numbers forward as far as, you know, our targets and our capacity that we need to be able to plan for. But right now, you know, the moratorium just ended in March, which for me seems like yesterday. I know it's been longer than that. You know, what's coming forward now is really not, other than Costco, there's really not a lot of projects in Central that are of scale. We have some smaller projects that are moving forward, but nothing that's of significant square footage or residential units. So right now, kind of the pipe is, is empty. You know, we're just starting to have pre-application meetings and collaboration meetings with different property owners, so, you know, our, our expectation is things will move forward, but it's going to take a while. You know, those numbers, even the 2,500 housing units is a big number for us. If you think about, you know, the size of the Anthology project, that's 400 housing units, and it's one of the bigger residential projects we've ever had. So if you think about, you know, escalating at that scale, getting to 2,500 or 7,700, 7,500, is still, it's a lot. So it's going to take us a while to get there, and I think a lot of people would say that's fine. You know, we've hit our housing target, our overall city housing target through growth outside of Central. But we still have, and part of this story is, we need to still be trying to focus our efforts on getting residential in kind of the core area and in Central, and not in other parts of the city. I don't know if that answers the question.
I think it, I think it does, and I think maybe a more general way of my, of asking my question would be, so when I, when I'm looking at the dashboard, and this is my first time looking through the dashboard, what, what would be the way to interpret some of these, where we see a trend, but that trend may be influenced by, you know, a large project or a large one-time event that we expect is causing a trend at this time point, but not necessarily continuing? So how, how do you recommend interpreting this dashboard? I guess is the more general question, in looking at the trends.
I think Vicki asked a question, the question that I asked only in a different way. How, so, and it's called a monitoring report for a reason.
Well, you know, I think the dashboard and the monitoring report are full of data, and it's just data. It doesn't talk about how things look or how things feel, it's data. But I think it also got us to a moratorium, where we said, "We're not getting enough affordable housing," because we pulled up the dashboard, and look, there's zero affordable housing right there. So I think when you see things like that, when you look at the data, you go, "Wow, we need to keep a close eye on this," and maybe at some point come up with some kind of trigger that says, "Hey, we're still not getting what we want, we need to fix it." I think that's how, that's, if I'm reading it for the first time, that's how I would interpret it. I would say, "Huh, that's all we have." Or, "Oh, look, this is what's still in the pipeline, so let's see what happens with what's coming." That's how I read it. It's kind of at face value.
It sounded like your question was similar to mine. Maybe it's a little different.
Did that help?
So I think, so I've captured both of those in the meeting notes, because that's what I'm doing tonight.
Thank you.
And I think part of what we will do before next year's report is maybe talk about whether there needs to be a little bit of narrative on the trends, and, you know, what we have seen and what that means long-term for the growth of Central. Because as Kristin mentioned, it's really not that yet. I think we can incorporate some of that in next year's update. But what this does do is, you know, as we, as we all are running a bunch of numbers through our head, and they all generate different images, knowing that we, we are going to hit our 30-year housing target next year, citywide, 10 years early, that gives us all a certain reaction. But as we look at how many housing units we have in the core, and knowing that we want housing in the core, it, it then starts to paint a more complicated picture, which is, I think, it's a good conversation for us to have.
So my question was actually going to be on the previous slide, which is why I thought that Vicki's was going to be on the previous slide. So there isn't, if there was going to be a horizontal line on the two charts on the left, they would be limits, not goals, right? All right?
They would be.
Capacity.
I was sorry, I had to see if this was Central or, or urban core. It would be capacity.
Yeah, which is another way of saying a limit, right?
Or a cap.
A cap, yes.
Yes.
I don't know that, I don't know that I'd call it a cap, though, because if you, I guess you could, but if you zone things higher to allow for more density, then you could get more. But yes, it would be a cap.
Point is, it's, my, here's my point. It's not a goal, right?
It's not, no, it's not a goal.
If you know. The next slide, those are goals, right?
Yes.
And here, they are not goals.
Correct.
They are something else.
Correct.
Right? So, and this may be related back to what my two fellow councilmembers just said a minute ago. In my perfect world, what I would like to see at some point is sort of, I mean, I like these, generally speaking, right? Because like, in my head, if, I don't, I sold my beloved motorcycle, but if I still had my motorcycle, and I was trying to ride from here to Minneapolis, and I was trying to do it in one day, and four hours went by, and I only covered 30 miles, I would be able to sort of write that down and do a line and say, "I'm not going to get to Minneapolis today."
Right.
And understanding what things are goals and what things are whatever you want to call not goals, I think is important to know, and at the risk of asking for yet a different piece of data, you know, to me, showing those two for the city, showing them for Central Issaquah, and showing them for the urban core, if you, if you looked at those and you had what the limits and the goals were also, I think you could have a pretty, a pretty detailed snapshot of, of how things are working in the city. And I'm not suggesting you have that for this meeting, but the next time we do this, I think that would be very valuable.
Okay. Got it.
Other questions? Anything? So, did you have something you wanted to say first?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I wasn't allowed for public comment. Have anybody who wants to comment on the monitoring report and dashboard?
I had to go home and get my work. This is from last year. My recollection is that this was supposed to be the big year review, right? Because we were supposed to be going through the Planned Action Ordinance Criteria of the trips at the city edges this year. Because I threw a hissy fit last year, because I wanted those numbers, because I wanted to understand if the trips that are on the road are within the Planned Action Ordinance for the Central Issaquah Plan. And when I read this, I didn't see those in here, and so I wanted to check back and make sure that we were actually covering what last year I thought was going to be the, the big thing. Everybody's looking at me so blankly. I swear I didn't dream it.
I wrote "big" with, with quotes.
Do you want me to finish?
Yeah, finish.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you. Other than that, I think that it's, it's making progress on being informative without overwhelming people with the data. The, I think that I agree with y'all, what is missing is a conclusion, or maybe even a "should we change anything?" question at the end. Do we need an action from this data to sort of help with an interpretation? Because it's hard to understand what to do, if anything, right? So that would be.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope, seeing none. Kristin, you had a.
Yeah, may I, may I address? So the Planned Action Ordinance information is in the monitoring report. And what we were not, we did everything except for, there were some transit information and bus stop information, and something else that we were not able to do this year. But the rest of the Planned Action Ordinance information is in the monitoring report. It's, there are separate tables in there that address it. Like the, their net, net growth, added growth, and then there are trips in there as well. So it is in there. And then at the beginning of the, I think Councilmember Goodman said that in the beginning there are some questions about, is this achieving the vision? And if not, what amendments do we need to make to achieve that vision? So, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
I, I noted that there was what I would call not very much acquisition of parks. And so I think that there is a need for the green necklace. We've done a lot of sort of planning around the connections that would be the green necklace. And so that's one, that's one thing that is tracked here. I'm glad that it's called out, and I think it's something that I'm interested in, just tracking as we go forward.
Great. I think I'll just reemphasize that what I would like to see is more analysis, and then evaluation of that analysis. Otherwise, it's a collection of data that is interesting, and we can pull out some meaning, but I think with all of the data that we're capturing, I think we should make really good use of it. And anyway, that, I wanted to call out the mitigation fees tables and say thank you.
Welcome.
Something that I've been asking for, and I know we had a lot of trouble rewriting history, but I'm, I'm glad that we are now capturing that, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is Old Town Subarea Plan. Here somewhere. And Kristin, are you?
It's still me.
It's still you?
Yes. Okay, here we go. Okay. So I'm not going to give the entire history like I did last time, even though it was kind of fun. But as a reminder, and for Vicki, who wasn't here last time and relatively new to the council, the update of the Old Town Subarea Plan started in 2016. In 2017, the Planning Policy Commission held a public hearing and, and recommended the amendments to council. Council, Land and Shore Committee, I think, believe, reviewed it three different times, and then in March of this year, remanded it back to the Planning Policy Commission. And there were some ideas to consider, as proposed by the Land and Shore Committee. In July, PPC held a public hearing, and then in September, it was referred back. So this is our second meeting here. So the March council requests, there were five that I didn't really go over last time, I'll go over this time. This one I touched on, Old Town Subarea Boundary. So this was going on at the same time as Central Issaquah Visioning, and Old Route 10 had been pulled out of Central Issaquah. So one of the considerations that PPC made was whether or not to pull the old, the Old Route 10 area into Old Town. The other consideration they made was whether or not to pull the area south of Darston-Clark out, where the schools are, out of Old Town. And their reasoning for doing that was that they felt like the feel there isn't the same as, you know, the original township and the grid system, there's no grid system, it's different, it just has a different feel. So after much deliberation, they decided to hold off, because they realized that we are going to go do the Old Town Design Standards next, and the regulations, and they thought, "Let's see what happens with that," excuse me, "see where that goes." And then one year after the, the design standards are adopted or amended, then they will look at the boundaries again and decide what to do. That was their decision. So then the proposed plan structure in relation to the Central Issaquah Visions, they talked about it, and the visions were still being done, so the format hadn't quite been set. But also, they felt like Old Town was unique, so they wanted to just keep it different. Strategies or actions from traffic calming efforts, they didn't add anything to what council had already recommended. Parking, there were already some policies in there. One policy went in there about the abusive use of parking, but that was taken out by Land and Shore at our last meeting. And there was also an action item added, an immediate actions to propose incentives for neighborhood-oriented businesses, parking incentives for neighborhood-oriented businesses, which is in there. And lastly, the proposed zoning changes, such as reduced building height and impervious surface increases, they agreed with what council had recommended and left it as is. So at our last meeting, yes? That's okay. That's okay. Sure. So they looked at Old Town, Old Route 10 had just been pulled out of Central Issaquah. So they considered pulling that into Old Town. The other potential was to remove the area south of Clark and Darston where the schools are located, simply because it just didn't have the same feel and streakery and that kind of thing. But after talking about it and realizing that the design standards were getting ready to be looked at again and amended as well, they said, "Let's wait and see what happens with the design standards and zoning and all sorts of things that are going on at the same time before they make a decision." So in one year.
So no proposed changes are, as a result, are in here?
So they didn't do anything with the boundaries? The boundaries are the same. They didn't change.
And then, I didn't think you said much about number two, proposed plan structure in relation.
They, we asked them, and the central visions were still being done. There wasn't anything set in stone. Plus, they felt like Old Town was different and had its own character, so they wanted the plan to be different with its own character.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I actually have a question on the last one. About the parking incentives?
Yes.
Could you explain what the final parking incentive advice was?
Let's see, what, they added an immediate, they added an immediate action, number 15, to provide parking incentives for neighborhood-oriented commercial projects, which will need to be defined, but that's, that's the recommendation. And then originally, there was a policy in there about monitoring or managing the abusive use of free parking, and the Land and Shore Committee asked us, we, we came in with a, with a proposed different policy last time, and that's what Land and Shore went with. So it's in the plan that you have tonight. Yeah.
And I'm wondering what the, what the proposed incentive would look like here.
I don't know yet. It, it's, don't know yet. So we'd have to figure that out. It's an action. It would be a code amendment to the Old Town Design Standards and parking policies. It's neighborhood-oriented businesses or neighborhood-serving businesses might be something, like I said, it would have to be defined. You know, maybe a local restaurant or laundry. And then originally, there was a policy in there about monitoring or managing the abusive use of free parking. And the Land and Shore Committee asked us, we came in with a proposed different policy last time, and that's what Land and Shore went with. So it's in the plan that you have tonight. Yeah.
And I'm wondering what the proposed incentive would look like here.
I don't know yet. It's, don't know yet. So we'd have to figure that out. It's an action. It would be a code amendment to the Old Town Design Standards and parking policies. It's neighborhood-oriented businesses or neighborhood-serving businesses might be something, like I said, it would have to be defined. You know, maybe a local restaurant or laundry or coffee shop, something. And originally, the word "small scale" was in there, but last, at the last meeting, Land and Shore asked us to take a small scale out, so it's just local businesses.
Is there another example of using parking incentives in the city?
Of abusing parking?
Of using parking incentives?
Of using parking incentives.
So where this started was, it was in reaction to the loss of Front Street Market. And there was a conversation that started about formula businesses. And the Chamber and the Economic Vitality Commission both sent out kind of position papers about not limiting formula-based businesses in Old Town. And so rather than doing that, we kind of took a different tact. And rather than more restrictions, what we, where we went was, is there the ability to provide an incentive to a more neighborhood-serving business? And, you know, what we came up with, which might be some of the easiest incentives would be for parking. And so what you could do is, you could, and there's, there would need to be a long conversation about this, we haven't unpacked this at all, is you could allow a business or a change of use, which might have a higher parking demand, go in without providing the additional parking spaces, for example. That would be an incentive to have that change of use happen. So for example, restaurants have higher parking generation rates than, say, the Edward Jones on Front Street, right? And if we really wanted a restaurant there and not Edward Jones, maybe we say, you know what? We're going to not require you as the landowner to find the extra three or four parking spaces that would be necessary to meet the code. That could be an incentive. But right now, all this is saying is, we want to explore that. If indeed the council supports that, we would want to explore that as a potential opportunity to try and keep Front Street more neighborhood-serving than having something, and I'm not implying that Edward Jones is not neighborhood-serving. But what I'm saying is that if we wanted to provide an advantage for businesses that were more neighborhood-focused than regional-focused, we would maybe want to try and do something in code. So, sorry for that long. Sorry. My mic works.
Good. So at the last meeting, we went through the plan page by page. And there were primarily, what these were, were clarifications of goals, policies, and action items. The other request that Land and Shore made was that we create a table that compared the action items with the goals and threats or opportunities to make sure that we were addressing what needs to be addressed, which was a pretty good exercise, actually. A little double check we had. So change, feel free to change my direction here. I was going to maybe go over the changes that we did make in response to you all last week. And then we could look through the table if you all want to talk about that.
Go through the changes that were made as a result of the previous...
You'd like to? Okay. Ooh, that's small. So these were all part of Quality of Life, and these were all the, what we're calling threats. Can you all read them? Okay. The first one, it was just, it implied, you know, these could happen. Well, no, actually, they have happened. So we just clarified, these have happened and could continue to happen. That development came in that was out of character and out of scale with the rest of Old Town. Vehicular traffic, so there had been a public request that we added definition of vehicular traffic, so we had made an attempt to do that. And Land and Shore asked us to abbreviate that a bit. So we took out some of the definition. Parking in many areas, especially near transit stops, was being used by transit commuters. That wasn't really clear why that was a problem, so it's inefficient, therefore detrimental to Old Town businesses. We changed that. Again, sort of the same kind of thing. Business owners believed that the codes were hindrance. Well, how? Or they were outdated. How so? They were hindrance to commercial development. We changed our technical term, non-vehicular mobility, just to pedestrians and bicycles. People's spaces are not as usable as they could be. And it said, due to code regulations. Not necessarily. Sometimes they're just not as usable as they could be. Need to find better ways to fix it. And the last one, we just changed the order. Neighborhood-serving retail has been lost. Thoughts or comments?
I have a couple of suggestions or things that I would like to change. The first one is number nine. Really, what we're talking about is the food desert. I mean, the example is the grocery store. And we have no other examples. And I think that's really, I mean, that's the only thing we talk about. So I think we should restate that to state what it is we're talking about. We're not talking about fresh food grocery stores, et cetera. We're talking about that we have a food desert because we lost the grocery store. And then the other thing is that we have a number three, number three and four, I think, are the most important ones. I would move regional traffic and parking in many areas up to one and two.
Okay.
Not that they're necessarily prioritized, but I think they're kind of buried. Those are my comments on that.
So, that's interesting. On the number nine, I think we've recently talked about the grocery store in particular. But I sort of actually like the language that's there because I think things like hardware store, I mean, I think there's probably a lot of things we could talk about that neighborhood-serving retail that is missing right now in Old Town. I think, but I do think that the grocery store is the most keenly felt.
So fair enough. And I would completely agree. So I, but I think we need to be a little bit more direct about what we're looking for. I think everybody will, who reads this, will go, yeah, we lost Front Street Market. And totally make a very good point. So why don't, why don't we be more clear about what we're looking for, what we're wanting, what we're missing now?
Okay. Not necessarily what's been lost, but what's missing?
I'm sorry?
Not necessarily then what has been lost, but what is missing? Because that includes both. If you talk about what's been lost, then it's pretty much the grocery store, because that's what will come to mind. But if you talk about what's missing, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand...
Well, the hardware store was lost too.
Okay. Okay.
So...
Is that all?
I'm sure what you all talked about last time.
Yes, to the best of my recollection, I think it's, it's very hard to use this format to knock, to punch list things, right? This is not how I'm used to trying to say, did we cover what, you know? I'm used to meetings where there's a, there's a, there's an action item list taken, and then you can sort of compare against that. So I don't feel 100% comfortable saying it was all, that it was all covered.
Okay. Thank you. Duly noted. All right. So into the goals and policies, with place-making under Goal A, oh, that we were just asked to add a link to the comprehensive plan and where that's located, so we did. And then balance the transportation network. It was decided that trolley really is not a transportation solution, so we removed the word trolley. Okay? May I move on?
I don't know necessarily where to put this. I noted it under community. Have you gone into community yet?
Not yet. Yes, we are.
The, you know, we've got this program, so to speak, where we're purchasing a lot of park properties and they're not, we don't have any development on them yet, no parks, they're just city property. We, I would like to see something in here about interim uses. I mean, we've used a lot of public money to buy public spaces that we're not using. And rather than turning them on to this one connect, eventually having one hopefully connected trail along the creek, that's wonderful. But in the meantime, let's let the, I think we should let the public use the properties that we've purchased with our money. And so I don't see any language in here about interim uses. Yeah.
If your microphone's not on.
I wasn't planning to talk.
But you said something to us, and we certainly want to capture that for the public's benefit.
I'm trying to multitask. It's not working very well.
Okay. All right.
And then under balance transportation network. And also, that's Goal E, and then Goal F, traffic. So I think especially, I don't know where these would go, but especially under Goal F, traffic, revisit neighborhood calming strategies. And then 2.8, develop and apply solutions. To me, it doesn't, there's anything there besides just some words that we're going to do something, and we're not quite sure what it is. So it would be nice if we had some specific things we were looking to do. We have talked about additional crosswalks, signalized crosswalks, I don't know, bike lanes. We talked about an all-way pedestrian scramble at Front and Sunset. But so far, I just sort of see in here, yeah, we have some traffic stuff we need to deal with, but we don't have anything concrete in here. So I would like to see some more specific things.
Okay.
Under parking, 2.10, it says, update parking requirements for new development. I don't know what that means. Is that what you were talking about?
Can we keep the slides current to the conversation we're having?
I'm sorry.
So here we are, parking. So this is the, I had mentioned that we had two proposed policies. One was about abusive parking, and the other one was a new one that was proposed. And this is the new one. Employee parking management strategies that ensure on-street and public parking is efficiently and effectively utilized to meet various needs in Issaquah. And then the other change that we made was update, this was a long conversation, update parking requirements to reflect today's widespread use of mobility options other than the car, is what we added.
I don't, I'm not sure, I don't know what either one of those things mean.
So I think we've got a little bit of a challenge. It was a long conversation. And this is where the challenge of having, we had three council members at the last meeting, and then now we've got only one that's a holdover from that last meeting. And I'm not sure I can do that one justice, because it was the other two council members that felt the strongest about this particular, I'm not sure exactly what to do, but...
So I can maybe add a little bit of a lens to this, and you guys can decide if that makes sense or not. So I'm going to start with 210, because I think it's easier than 29. So 210, basically, this came out of the Old Town Task Force, which was comprised of many business owners on Front Street. And they were looking at the parking standards in the rest of the city and said, our parking standards are much more egregious than the rest of the city. And so they asked to have the city look at updating the parking standards for Old Town to be similar to Central Issaquah and/or the villages, because both of them had what I would describe as lighter parking requirements than what were required in Old Town. So that's what 210 is, would be to potentially reduce the number of parking stalls required to be more consistent with what we require in the rest of the city. Now, the reason why it says mobility options is the reason why we require less parking stalls, say, in Central, is because there's an expectation that people are getting to different places by transit, by walking, and by bicycling. If we're successful in Old Town, I think those mobility modes are part of the mobility system as well. So that's what 210 is, whether you guys believe that or not. That's what 210 is. You want to talk about that before I go to 29?
Well, I guess what I want to talk about is, I have, I do recall that conversation happening not just at last Land and Shore, we've talked about it before.
Yeah.
As this plan has come up and maybe in other venues. But 210 in no way says anything like what you just talked about. So if we all, none of us were here next year and we looked at this plan again, nobody would know what that meant.
Okay.
So why don't you just, why don't we just say it like that? You know, update parking requirements or review parking requirements in light of business owners' concerns that requirements are so strict that that's, they have an unfair...
Disadvantage.
Yeah, they're disadvantaged when compared with, you know, business development in other parts of the city.
Maybe to be more consistent with the rest of the city?
Something. And I don't know that it needs to be consistent with the rest of the city, because we have different visions for different parts of the city. But I think they are feeling like they have a significant disadvantage. And so that's specifically what we're looking at. We're not looking at widespread use of mobility options. So...
I also, the way it reads, it seems like it's applicable to new development, right? So it's for new development. But the way you were talking about it, it's the existing businesses, right?
Yes. I mean, the intent would be for existing, but existing as an expansion. So you're not going to have a new parking requirement unless you either expand or change use or, yeah, expand or change use. And so, like, for example, you know, right now, the parking code would say that if you want to do outdoor dining, like, so some outdoor tables, like behind Levitate, those generate a parking requirement. And so part of this would be, you know, that, so it is not just new development, it's expansion or change of use as well.
So we have, we require more parking in Old Town than we do in other parts of the city?
Generally, yes.
And yet, it's the worst park, and yet we have the least available parking?
Well, that's why we're doing a parking study.
It's just weird. It's weird to me. Because other parts of the city, it's easy to find parking, and that's the area of the town that it is hard to find parking.
So there's a little bit of a difference here in that parking requirements, so I'm going to say something which isn't completely true, because Central is different. Parking requirements historically in suburban areas are minimums. So like for Gilman, if I was building a strip mall in the 80s, I would want there to be ample parking. Grocery stores typically want enough parking for, you know, the day before Thanksgiving, but the rest of the time, it's underutilized. And so for Old Town, because the parcels are smaller, they're barely scraping the minimums. So even though their minimums might be higher than the minimums in Central, there's actually less parking per square foot than there is currently in Central, because Central would be considered overparked by most of us. I don't know if that answered your question, but it's my take on it.
I just had a sort of related concern in terms of having, well, in other parts of the document, it talks about how there's inefficient parking and there's not adequate parking for, to be efficient for the businesses. And then in this case, it would be. So how do we reconcile lighter parking with the need for more efficient parking closer to businesses?
It's a conundrum.
It's right next to it.
So...
Oh, you crossed it out.
Crossed out anything?
It was all me.
Kristin crossed it. Yeah. Okay, well...
I think, I mean, so I'm going to say that the parking study that we're doing now is going to shed some light on the parking issue downtown. They are mapping out who's parking where and how long they're there. So it'll at least give us a glimpse. And so, you know, what I would say is, again, 29 came out of the task force. Task force was heavily represented by business owners on Front Street. 29, I mean, 210.
210, yeah.
210. And 29 is trying to address the perception that we have that are currently free parking, that's mostly not on private property. So that that's on city-owned land is being used by folks other than people using the businesses. And so, so part of what 29 is trying to get to is, do we need to do parking management? I don't know that we know that we do at this point, because that study's not done and the recommendations haven't come from... because that study's not done, and the recommendations haven't come forward to the City Council. I mean, I would actually say 2.9 should be explore or consider, rather than just straight...
Well, they probably both should be consider. Because it says we're going to do something.
Right.
We haven't seen, haven't seen the content of what we're going to do.
2.9 just says, "Employee Parking Management Strategies That Ensure On-Street Public Parking Is Efficiently and Effectively Utilized to Meet Various Needs in Issaquah." That doesn't seem like a specific path. It just seems like good stewardship.
Well, we don't manage our parking now, I would say. So, parking, I mean, other than striping, we stripe for parking stalls.
And most of the while, we tow.
There's, you know, we tow on, if you parked on a public street for more than 24 hours, you could get towed if somebody reports you. But in terms of, like, all that parking behind stands, you know, in between City Hall and the senior center, there's no signs, there's no management. It's just, you can park there if you want. And so, what 2.9 says is potentially employ an active management system of some kind, whether it's time-limited or some other mechanism to try and get more frequent turnover.
I think we're threading those three words fairly, I mean, a parking management strategy could be to put in a 500-stall parking garage.
It could be.
Right? It's not necessarily to come up with some elaborate scheme that involves, you know... So, I don't know. I have many thoughts on parking, and I'm packing them into a little ball.
Yeah.
And I'm burying them deep, deep, deep inside me as I wait for the parking study.
Yes.
And will not, and will not burden you with a rant this evening.
You're burying your feelings, Tola.
Yes, intentionally.
Okay. So, I guess, sitting here, thinking about it, reading it, talking about, you know, talking about it, I think that 2.9 and 2.10, they are, they get at very different problems, or potential problems perceived, or, you know, reality, I don't, I don't know, factual-based or perceptions, whatever, they're different problems. One is about whether businesses are allowed to develop, redevelop, based on parking restrictions, that's 2.10. 2.9 is whether we have a parking problem downtown because we have, we don't enforce parking, you know, limits on public streets, and we have a City Hall where everybody who works here parks, right, on the street?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, we also have, anecdotally, folks driving to Issaquah and parking all day long, and taking the buses and going to Seattle or Bellevue or wherever to work.
Right.
Those are very different problems. I don't think 2.9 and 2.10 just lay out goals clearly.
Okay.
Again, because if we have to sit and talk about it, then I don't think the goals are very well.
I mean, I will say, I think at the last, I'm sorry. I will say at the last meeting, I think there was an, there was an active thought to not try to name the specific problems, that we didn't like that the previous language said abusive use of free parking. So, I think, I think there was an intentional move away from what you are proposing.
So, I wasn't proposing, putting back in the word of abusive use. I think there's a way to write that objectively that lays out a goal based on a general problem that we should be able to define in a non-blame-worthy way, or name-calling. Or what do you want to use?
Okay. I'm just saying, the tenor of the conversation last month wasn't a problem with the word abusive.
Okay.
It was that, I think that the conversation was to not focus on what the particular list of A, B, and C are the problems, but rather, talk about where we want to get to, which is efficiently and effectively, parking efficiently, effectively utilized to meet various needs in Issaquah.
So, I don't, that's fine. It's just that I don't think, I think that the goal should give you, and I, I think you should know from the goal what problem you're trying to solve. And, and we've had to sit and talk about it to figure out what problems we're trying to solve. And so, I, I'm not disagreeing with you at all on, the goal should be where we want to be, but I don't know, what are we trying to tackle? If we don't know what the problem is, what are we, I, I just don't think that we have the right words, is all.
And I think, I think the committee was trying to let the parking study tell us what the problems are, and not codify it in the language here. I think that's what the conversation was. Keith, am I remembering it correctly?
I think so.
So, again, I'm not disagreeing, but I don't think, I mean, I understand what you're trying to say. I still don't think that "employee parking management strategies that assure on-street and public parking is efficient and effective." I don't think our problem is efficiency or effectiveness. I think most people who talk about the parking downtown would say, "We don't have enough." And, and that's, so nowhere does it say, you know, you know, look at, and maybe it should say, you know, we should look at, you know, once the parking study, employ the, employ strategies based on the results of the parking study. Maybe that's the language. No?
I like that language.
I think, I think that's the missing piece of this, is, and part of it is just the time lapse of when we started this to where we are now, which the parking study's underway.
So, that was an intervening...
The one even started when we started this.
It's true. It's so true.
So, I think, I think we can reference the, I think we need to reference the parking study, because I think whatever action comes out related to parking is going to have its genesis in the parking, the findings of the parking study.
Okay. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good conversation.
Okay.
Speaking of the task force, you mentioned that number 2.10 was from the task force. And then, you mentioned that Land and Shore last month asked for a table. I know we have a, don't we have an Old Town Vitality Task Force report?
We do.
Okay. Have we compared what task force recommended, and kind of gone through there, and compared what they recommended, and what, what followed all the way through to make it into the Subarea Plan?
Yes, and that's where quite a few threats came from, was from the task force.
That's where what?
That's where a lot of the threats came from, was from the task force.
Okay. Have we gone through, so, I think they had, like, I have their table here. I think they had some tables about, like, what we should do. And just wondering if we've, it would be nice to know what the difference between what they recommended and what landed in the plan.
Okay.
So, how they compare. Because, you know, that was a lot of work, and a lot of people put a lot of time in, volunteer time.
Yep.
And so, I think it is an exercise that, not only to respect that work, the time they put in, but to also, you can see what may have been missed or different, or, anyway.
All right. Moving on?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, this is, I mentioned this one earlier. We were just asked to take out the word "small scale," and so, we did that. Arts and Culture Hub, oh, we had listed originally several nonprofits, but some of them weren't really nonprofits. It's like, the Arts Commission, and we start, we decided that, it was determined that actually listing people, you either leave somebody out, or you put somebody in who shouldn't be there. So, it was just providers of visual and performing arts. That's what that one was. Continue to visit, oh, we, again, "Visit Issaquah" was something else that was not in place when we started this plan. And now that it is, we were asked to mention "Visit Issaquah" and bring them into the, into this. And so, we actually combined 4.8 and 4.9, and used, added "Visit Issaquah." So, it's kind of hard to read. "Continue to support, 'Visit Issaquah,' and to market historic downtown Issaquah and its recreational and entrepreneurial opportunities as a tourist destination."
I think I would just take out "continue to."
You would just take out "to continue to"?
Just put "support."
Okay.
Yeah, not to wordsmith, but it's just different than the other language.
I know that "dia" is referenced many times throughout, but it would seem to me that "Visit Issaquah" and "dia" also is part of this awareness around recreation and opportunities.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Sorry, I don't understand.
Just the support, "Visit Issaquah" and "dia."
Oh, gotcha.
And just to say that I realize that "dia" is referenced elsewhere. It just, it seems that it should be referenced here as well.
I thought you were talking about 4.5, "mass," not tracking. Thanks.
Okay. This was also a long discussion. We had talked about maintaining housing stock. And what it really boiled down to at the end of the meeting was we wanted to maintain or increase housing types. That's also in our housing strategy, to increase housing types here. This was really about the goal, and not so much about the policy, to clarify what that was. So, increase housing types, increase the variety of housing types located in Old Town, or in Old Town. And that was the change that we made.
I have a different question. Any questions on that one?
Nope.
No?
Okay, so, I have a question on 5.4A, which is providing a variety of approaches, approaches to limit and mitigate teardowns of residences.
So, that came, are you wondering what that is, what that means?
Yeah, because my knee-jerk reaction is, that seems, doesn't seem right, but...
Well, that came straight out of the housing strategy. And part of the concern is that too many houses are being torn down, and larger houses are going in that people can no longer afford. And if you're able to maintain what is there, then it becomes more affordable. And mitigate may be, sure, you can build this, tear it down and build this house, but it has to be, again, this is something, we'd have to figure out exactly how it would work, but tear it down, but you have to have an ADU in the back. I don't know if you can require that. But something like that, that helps to keep the affordability in Old Town, was the, is the intent of that strategy.
I don't quite understand that. It reads as if, if you buy, like, a single-family home, it's going to be, and it's a, it maybe needs to be torn down. It almost seems like we're putting up, we want to put up barriers to prevent people from tearing it down and just building another single-family home.
I think tearing it down unnecessarily.
What does that mean?
There may be a house that somebody sells because they can't afford to maintain it. You know, and if they sell it, then somebody's going to come in and tear it down. But if there's a, some kind of a toolkit out there that somebody can use to, you know, where they've got all the tools or people to help them to fix a house, rather than having to sell it, then maybe they can keep it.
I don't know that I agree with that.
Okay.
I'm concerned about that. That's, that seems a little bit of a stretch. I would need to go back to the housing strategy and look at that.
Okay. Anything else in there?
Sorry, I'm not clear what you wanted. Were you proposing changing the language on 5.4?
5.4A, I, I'm, maybe, I don't know. I wanted, I need to think about that. I don't, I don't think I agree that we want to... It just seems a little, if I buy a property and I want to tear down an old house and the city doesn't want me to, just that just, I don't know, that doesn't feel right to me.
So, Trish and Keith, you were much more involved in the housing strategy conversations than I was, and that came straight from it. Is there something that I'm missing that came up during those conversations? No? Okay.
If you're going to tear down a single-family residence and put up a single-family residence, I don't know why that's a problem. This just, this, "tear down a single-family residence." Yeah, I think that feels a little reaching to me.
So, you know, this is, this is definitely strong-arming. This is local government strong-arm, right? This is if, this is responding to, I think, a concern that we were losing our 1950s and older housing stock in Old Town to teardowns where someone would build a much bigger and different-character residence in its stead. Now, we're addressing that in some different ways. I think if, if the council, as part of this plan, there's some proposed code revisions, that would include some height reductions as well as some new architectural standards, even for single-family. So, I think there's some other measures that are being proposed in this plan that could address the concern that was raised during the housing strategy conversation. But, you know, what I think was, you know, happening was, people were concerned that, that there was going to be teardowns, and big boxes were going to come in their place.
So, I mean, I, this, look, this traces back to something that council has approved, and it's something that I support. And I think it's something that's in, in the comments that are included with this bill. It's something that, I believe that the public in Old Town said was important as well, right? This isn't just, this isn't just a council thing. This is, this is something that people have said is intrinsic to the nature of Old Town, and makes it different than the rest of the city.
I guess my, I would want to look at, want to know more about the actual concern. Is the concern teardown of a single-family home, rebuild of a single-family home, that's completely out of character in terms of look or size on a single-family lot? Or is the concern teardown of a single-family home combining lots, for example, and then building a mega mansion, or, there's, those are different, those are very different animals. But that's, but to, but to say, "We are going to try hard to not let someone buy a single-family lot, tear down something that probably anybody would want to tear down just to prevent somebody from putting another single-family home in its place." That's what this says you can't do. That's what this says we don't want.
No, I'm, I'm not saying what I want to say. I think the language that anybody would want to tear down is unfortunate. I think that there are people that love living in small, modest houses in Old Town. And I think that for us to make an effort to try to keep small, modest houses in Old Town, particularly because it's unique to Old Town, right? We're not saying in the city as a whole, we want to keep, we want to do anything active to keep small, modest houses in place, but I think Old Town, we do.
So, so, what I meant was, it would be easy to see why somebody buying that property might want to tear it down and build a new house. Not everybody would want to. But it would, but there are circumstances where that seems like that would be the reasonable thing to do. Certainly wouldn't be unreasonable to do that. And this says, "We're going to have policies that say, almost say you can't do that." And I think that stretches it too far.
I think throughout the city, throughout King County, there are people who buy smaller, older houses and tear them down and put bigger, more expensive houses on them. And it's a great way to make money. And I think that we are saying that, we have heard in the community, and, and I would be interested to see if we could reference back to what we heard, because I thought I read that in the, in the community notes, that we want to actively try to keep Old Town, you know, to keep some of the smaller things around. So, yes, that we want to try to prevent that happening in Old Town, different from the rest of the city.
But it doesn't even say, so, what you're talking about is, I mean, what if somebody wanted to tear down and put up a house that was in exactly the same size, but just in much better shape? So, we need to know about that.
So, there are two goals that are, there's the goal, "Preserve Residential Neighborhoods," and that's the one about preserving the character. And then, there's the goal where this currently is, which is increase housing types. So, my first thought is that a lot of this discussion is about that we want to maintain the character, we want to maintain these architectural types and the older housing types. the character, we want to maintain these architectural types and the older homes because that's part of the character. So I wonder if it, if it better fits, because it's not about increasing the housing types to not have a teardown, right? It's, it's maybe retaining a housing type, but then it's preserve residential neighborhoods. So I think that it potentially better fits there, and then maybe we need to make a change to have it, have it be about maintaining the residential neighborhood character. I think that when I've, when I've been hearing about preventing teardowns as an affordable, as a method to have affordable housing, it's more like B, 5.4B, which is the, the multifamily projects, making sure that we retain multifamily projects that are affordable for people and not having that become, you know, one big single-family if it's a number of, if it's a multifamily building. So I think that belongs there, but I wonder if we should try to move this discussion about preservation of, of homes into goal L.
Is there anything in here about not being able to purchase lots, only eight lots?
No.
So is it possible that somebody could buy one or two hundred and thirty lots and build four miles? I reached my max.
Tola cut off my microphone.
So the... That would...
There's not, but the 5.1, adopt architectural standards and updated development standards consistent with the character and style of existing residences, that would likely be addressed there when we do the code, when we update the code.
I, well, I, I hear what you're saying. I don't disagree. I just, 5.4A doesn't, I don't, I don't think it addresses, I don't, I don't think it considers all the potential consequences. It's just a statement. Learned about that statement. I'm having unintended consequences.
Okay. So are we removing that one? What are, what are we doing with that one?
No, what do you, what do you?
Like, I'll just, I, I mean, I think we should, not in the next 10 minutes, but try to understand what the community comment was. I mean, I just, just going through, I found one, great to have affordable housing, enables current homes to gain income without selling and tearing housed down. There should be limited to small cottage-type buildings. Well, that was about ADUs, but I mean, the idea around...
Tola.
Small homes being... Sorry. So, I mean, I think that we should have a conversation about what we heard from the community and how they feel about small homes and their role in Old Town. Because I think, without being able to right now do a comprehensive survey of the notes that are in here, I think we heard that recurring from, from the community.
So I think, so I wrote that down. I was anticipating that request. So I think both for the housing strategy that generated the limitation on teardowns, and I'm gonna say that was number six, but that's probably not right, as well as the survey, I think it was two? Okay. Either six or two, or divide that, four. And the comments we got through the survey of Old Town as part of the plan update. So what we can do is try and put those together and give you kind of the amount of comments and those specifically we got from the community related to kind of both preserving existing stock as well as trying to limit teardowns.
Can we go back?
To the plan?
Preserve residential neighborhoods. 5.2. It says reduce allowable heights in higher-density areas. Reduce from what?
So these are, so again, these lead to actions, you know, so this was really related to the higher-density residential on Sunset.
And the heights, I believe, currently 30 feet. And I don't know exactly what the reduction would be, but right now you can get three full stories in there, and I think the idea is to not have three full stories.
I think it's four.
Is it four?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's four going down to three was the conversation at PPC.
I think it was two.
So the, the housing project that Tola says he likes, I'm gonna put that on you since you did say that once, on Sunset, the one with the parking under it and it's big and square, that's the one that I think most everybody else thinks is out of scale. So this, this would, for that zoning, it's pretty much the frontage on Sunset, this would take us from four stories down to three.
Actually, yeah. It said number two, action item, immediate action item number two. Code revisions to reduce heights to three stories in the CBD, three stories in MFH, which is along Sunset Way only, and two stories in SFD, single-family duplex.
Where are that?
Good. So that's under the immediate actions.
Immediate actions on, well, I can't tell you which page. I don't have the whole thing.
I just think 5.2 needs to be clarified. And then you said the action items say reduce height, limit height to a single, to two stories in a single-family duplex?
Yes.
Single-family duplex, the same as single-family? Single-family zoning?
The heights, I...
For just a single-family zone?
No, not in Old Town.
Yeah, but, single-family duplex comprises single-family and you can also have duplexes.
Correct.
Then should we... Should we have a goal that just says reduce height? Single-family duplex, just two stories?
We, we had it originally. We had heights in the policies, but we took them out because they were too specific, and so we moved them to the action items.
Right. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What does MFH mean?
Multifamily high, so they can have 29 dwelling units per acre.
High density then?
Yes, high density.
Okay, thank you.
So then we have the action items. Number 12 was just not actionable enough, instead, so instead of conduct a financial analysis, it was just simply, please just fund and build the front street or downtown streetscape plan. We had a long, there was a brief discussion about sustainable building action plan strategies, specifically solar energy, and we were asked, can't that be moved up from the longer-term? Part of it can, so we said, in this part, promote the sustainable building action strategies. And then we also added in here to the short-term action items to actually amend some of the codes to establish new criteria regarding solar energy where possible. That's number 13, so we added that one. Treasures, we wanted to make sure that the treasures aren't, Old Town's not going rogue and they're not on their own thing, but they're consistent with the city's wayfinding plan. And again, just fund and build. Don't think about it, just fund and build.
Any questions? Just sort of a philosophical question. Number 13. Do you want that in Old Town? Shouldn't we kind of want that everywhere?
So it is. So the, the green building action strategies, whatever you guys just approved. One of the actions out of that said to incorporate that into all of the sub-area plans. So as we're doing sub-area plans, and that was, I think, Paul's comment from last time, let's go ahead and say now we need to now include it specifically in Old Town because we're doing the old, the sub-area update.
Thank you.
And then longer-term actions, we just moved number four up, and then we, again, we took out Trolley. And those were the only changes that were requested there. So those are the changes. We still have a chart, but we can postpone the chart if you'd like until we add the task force list to it. I don't know.
More questions?
Okay.
The, on the immediate actions list, number 11, prepare an inventory of missing pedestrian and bicycle facilities and look to increase crosswalks and connectivity. Is this everywhere?
That was the intent.
On all streets?
In Old Town.
Yes, in Old Town. Whoops.
Can we, can we do that? Every, I mean, are we gonna be able to afford that, or do we want to prioritize? Because it sets up an expectation that we're gonna do that right away in 2019 and 2020. I would be surprised.
I, I think there are certain classifications of streets that, you know, we would say you don't get a crosswalk on a residential street, right? So once you get into the neighborhoods, they're not gonna look at each of those intersections and say, you don't need a crosswalk. They're gonna say, based on the volume of traffic on these intersections, you don't need a crosswalk and you don't need bike lanes because the bikes are in the, in the travel lane. So it's, I think it's not as, as big of a work product as it sounds, because I think by classification, some of the streets are gonna fall off the list just from the get-go.
What about sidewalks?
Sidewalks is a morass.
So I would, I would think that number 11, if we're gonna do more work on this plan, I would think that, I would like to know whether we needed to create some sort of, I don't like the term limiting language, but language that makes it clear that in 2019 and 2020, we either are or not gonna build sidewalks everywhere in downtown, in the Old Town, because that's what it says, 2019 and 2020, and it will...
I think we're just gonna, we're just gonna understand what the scope of that is, right? So I think the first piece of the puzzle is, let's understand what we're missing, then that'll be a capital conversation with the council in terms of now are you ready to do it all? And is it even doable?
Fair enough, thank you.
Okay.
Number 16, code revisions to expand the sidewalk use district to Old Town. What is that?
So right now, so we created a section of code 1205. It started in the Highlands. It then got applied to Central. And so for use of sidewalks by businesses for like cafe tables, it's allowed by right in Highlands and Central. In Old Town, the way you get there is with a special use permit that you have to actually apply for annually, and so it's cumbersome, the city can take it away. Sidewalk use ordinance allows for some permanent improvements. So if you remember, Levitate actually put some, initially when they put those tables out on Front Street, they actually had a really nice kind of perimeter fence around it, and because it was permanent, we made them take it out. So this would make Old Town, it would facilitate use of sidewalks for business use like we've done in other parts of the city.
So can we add some language to number, to 16, to the effect of what you just said, to facilitate?
Sure. We were, we were asked last time to add language for the same reason. And we could, we have the same language down there, but it was to 1.8 under community, facilitate the active use of sidewalks by area businesses to increase accessibility to businesses and encourage interactivity between ground floor retail uses and the sidewalk, which is the whole purpose of that chapter. So we could just move that down there.
Well, something just to...
Well, add it to it, something like that.
To facilitate or allow use of sidewalks out.
Absolutely.
Is that okay? And then my last question, I think, is, I had Visit Issaquah, where is it in here? But we already talked about that earlier. Do you have a master plan for Memorial Field?
I believe it's part of the park strategic plan update that they asked for both TVP and Memorial to have a fresh look.
Okay. It would be interesting to have, I mean, that's a big park. Be interesting to have a reference in here somewhere. It's a suggestion.
To Memorial Park or to updating Memorial Park?
Something, but I, I'll look at the park strategic...
It should connect to the park strategic plan, but I think, I think to Stacy's point, Memorial Field is a big enough amenity in Old Town that it deserves kind of a call-out, but I think it should connect in terms of revisioning, connecting it to the park strategic plan.
It shouldn't be new.
I thought we did, but I guess we didn't, so I will do that.
We'll look for that.
I might have missed it. I tried to.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. So would you like to move on and go through the table, or do you want to wait until next time when I add?
I have a few things on this.
Oops, sorry.
So I think that the one about the treasures, it's seven on short-term actions. Whoops.
There we go.
I, I like the intent, but I think that it's not clear, because it's, it reads like develop and implement wayfinding measures, including Issaquah treasures, and treasures are not wayfinding measures. So I think it's to develop and implement wayfinding measures, including to the Issaquah treasures, or to the treasures, right?
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying.
That are consistent. So otherwise, I think that one is good, and I do like that one. And then I wondered, what is, what is the idea around the Old Town Community Engagement Program?
So, Old Town is one of the few communities that doesn't have a formalized HOA or a group to meet and talk about issues. So the idea was that we could help them and maybe facilitate meetings on an annual basis, semi-annual basis, nothing's been established, to talk about, I don't have an agenda, but to talk about issues, to talk about any plans that may be coming through, any street changes that may be coming through, construction that may take place, so that if they have questions, then they can ask about it, which we already do, but this would be a more regular, you know, and hey, guess what? This plan, in six months, this may be coming through, kind of thing. Yeah. Just, just some way to help the community come together a little better, since they don't have an HOA, to do that for them.
And my last question is that, under the threats, there was the, that the creek hasn't been prioritized, and then it looks to me like the only place that it's in the actions is longer-term actions under improved public access and views of Issaquah Creek and east fork of Issaquah Creek. So does it appear in the short-term or immediate actions anywhere?
No.
So part of that, and Stacy mentioned this earlier, so maybe this is, maybe we could do something as an interim. So, you know, we're buying up properties along the creek, and I think until, you know, those park improvements show up on the capital improvement plan, and, and I don't know that they are at this point, I'm gonna defer to my parks friends who aren't here. You know, so that's why it landed fairly down on our timeline. If the council prioritizes those, you know, as part of the CIP conversation, which you guys will do next year, as far as now turning some of those creekside acquisitions into active park space, you know, that would be great. I think because we didn't have any sense that that was a more immediate effect, I think that's why it landed where it did on our timeline.
And I should note, too, in the downtown streetscape conceptual plan, that came up often with the task force, that there wasn't enough accessibility or visibility of the creek, so that was included in the task force. And so that was also included in the plan. And there are two identified locations to potentially increase visibility and access. So, you know, if, if that gets funded and done, then it would be implemented through that as well.
I have a question. How does, so we have the Green Necklace, and it, and we have the Parks Recreation Open How does, so, we have the Green Necklace and it, and we have the Parks Recreation Open Space Trails Plan, we're calling it Parks Plan, let's just say. I have a vision. I want to be able to walk from Squawk Valley Park to where the creek outlets in the state park.
Yes.
I want to do that before I die of old age. How do we, I mean, there's all these pieces, right? And you've, and you've just touched on an element of it, which is like, what do we want to do with parcels that we're acquiring along the creek? How do we, as a council, get our arms around? I'm not sure that that particular thing of like, we talk about access to the creek, but I'm not sure that we really, I'm not sure everybody shares my vision of what that means, my ability to walk from Squawk Valley Park all the way to the lake. But this, this, at some point, we need to say something more than we should increase our access to the creek, right? Because I think if we don't, if we don't say something more than that, we're going to be, we're going to be dribbing drabbing it till the end of time. And it's great that we're acquiring property and that's, and that's an essential part of, of us integrating the creek into our town better. I realize I'm asking big philosophical questions and we're dealing with a very specific thing here, but it's just, it just hits so many facets of what we do as a city.
Yeah.
At the interim conversation we had earlier? About what we use?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and the plan has been to acquire properties, you know, the plan has been for 30 years, to acquire properties to be able to walk the whole distance. And we've spent millions of dollars doing that. And so, now let's use it. At some point, you might be able to walk all the way, but right in the meantime, use it. And so.
So, how big of a stick do you want to swing?
Not in this document.
Okay. Because we can, we can, we can do a little change, like change improved to prioritize and, and facilitate interim use. I think, I think the, the concept of, let's get some return in a, in a more near, near term. And maybe that happens not in the 23 to 30 timeframe, maybe that's, and we, I think we need to talk to parks and see what's possible. But let's try and look for something in the short term in terms of, of getting that access to the creek. But to your point, Tola, I have not had that conversation with Mr. Watling. I need to have that conversation with Mr. Watling to give you a better answer than I can tonight in terms of what is the vision? I know that is his vision as well. So, you two share that vision that you should be able to walk from Squawk to Lake Sama.
That's the city's vision.
Yeah.
I don't know if we have that written down quite that way, so.
So, so, but when that's expected to be possible, I don't know the answer to that. That's a good, that's a good, that's a meaty conversation point that we should have.
Or even when some intermediate steps towards that are possible, right? Like, if you could walk from, you know, where the old dam was to the hatchery, right?
Yeah.
We might be fairly close on that and yet, you know, still missing essential bits of it. I just don't.
Okay.
I'll tell you, I have flown over, I have flown my drone over the center line of the creek for a stretch of it down there. And it's gorgeous. It's just so beautiful. And we, you know, just are just scraping the edges of, scraping is the wrong word, but we're just touching the edges of that, of that unbelievable thing that we have.
Yeah, absolutely.
Scouring is a better word?
No, much, much worse.
I thought it would be helpful. All right. Other comments?
Just on, on that one, I think in the conversation with, with Jeff, it would be good to talk to you about if we can do, I mean, I think there's more to it than improving the views, for example, like we could do Habitat and also different public uses. And I like the idea of interim uses, but to sort of flesh out the idea of what we could do and also what we could do short-term or even immediate term.
Then I think Kristin asked if we want to go over the table that was created for this meeting. We probably should pull it up and see if anybody has any questions because if, I think I feel that it's coming back next month or.
Why don't we summarize after we hear public comment?
I'm just saying. That way, we have, you have comments or have new comments with this. Okay. Well, I don't know that we need to go through one by one. I think ask comments or questions.
And I'll just say the intent, when we, we were asked to do this, we had all these action items at the, at the end, and council asked, what are these addressing? So, we matched them up with goals and we matched them up with threats and opportunities. And in some cases, there was not a goal or there was not an opportunity, but there's a reason for doing it and that was noted in here.
Okay.
It was kind of reverse engineering the plan from the action items to see if there was actually a thread that it came from. And as Kristin mentioned earlier, I think, I think we found it a, a really good exercise to go through.
This is, when I talk about an effectiveness matrix that I've been talking about for the, the strategic plan, this is exactly what I'm talking about.
I'll send it over.
I'm not running down effectiveness matrix, unless you want me to.
Please don't.
So, I think, I think this is a tricky one, but the, if we are, if we are identifying the loss of the grocery store as a threat, is that addressed here and how specifically could it be addressed? Because it, in the, in the version that we came into the meeting with, it, it was sort of more broad, but I think, I know I've heard a lot from the community about the need for a grocery store. And so, if we're going to specifically call that out, can we more specifically match an action to, to address that in particular?
Okay.
Do you have anything else for us, Kristin?
I don't. That is it.
So, it's that time for public comment. Come on, David. Some microphones.
I'm kind of amazed that the parking isn't a lot worse, given the 554 crowding us in the morning. It is a pleasure to get on here and get the seat over on the, on the driver's side window seat so I can see the progress of sound transit over the, the rails and all going over I-90 and Mercer Island. But, you know, it just, the bus is fairly empty here. It's jammed with a huge lineup at, in the parking, you're up at the top floors a lot of times. So, it's going to get worse and we got to deal with, with parking in the downtown. Hopefully, the study will do that. I'm, I want you to tell me what business is in, in Central, in, no, well, in the, in this area, the, could survive as a neighborhood-serving retail. I don't know of any business that could survive on just customer base being the neighborhoods if we expand it beyond this particular neighborhood. My brother's got the Storongeck Store. He's one of three stores, antique stores that do the British and English antiques in all of Western Washington. If he were dependent on, on the Old Town, he would not sell much. And I think Village Theater, if it were dependent upon the local neighborhoods, would not function. I mean, it advertises and draws from Western Washington practically. I mean, let's be realistic about neighborhood serving retail. Tear downs, there's two concerns. One is people don't want to see a tear down and then a modern house that they don't like there. The bigger concern, and I think the one that needs to be addressed, is the tear down and then a three-story huge box with right up to the property lines as close as they can get and completely dominating the, the neighboring houses. And they're not affordable. I mean, they'll be very expensive, very nice condominium-type duplexes. We're not, we're, they're not cheap. Sidewalks, the residential area, we still got downtowns or streets in Old Town that don't have sidewalks, but I think there's places on Squawk that are a lot more exciting walking without a sidewalk than the downtown. So, there's other priorities for sidewalks. But certainly, when something goes in new or a certain level of redevelopment of property, getting the sidewalk, at least in sections done, is important. Memorial Field is a treasure that's underused and we need to work on that. And I know the Parks Department feels that same way. When I go behind the fire station to get to the senior center, I got to think about what shoes I'm wearing that day because it's, it's, it's wet. And there's other issues there, but it's surprising how little use that, that area Parkland acquisition, if we use so-called salmon money to acquire a property, we're not going to be able to use it for parking likely in an interim use even. But if it was just bought straight out, and then that certainly could work out. Thank you.
Thank you. Me?
I'm going to boil parking down to not what is the problem, but what is success? What do we actually want parking to do? Do we want parking to serve the retail and the restaurants? Do we want parking to accommodate traffic? Do we want parking so that people in City Hall can get to work? So, what does success look like? I think this is going to be our fifth parking study in the last 20 years that I have been, 22 years that I've been doing this or however long I've been doing it. And they all come to the same answer every time. We have plenty of parking. So, it never resolves the private parking areas that we have where people reserve their parking just for their businesses. And so, I don't expect this parking study is going to get us an, any different answer than the prior five without some big policy choices of, you know, you got to pay for your parking. We're going to have parking enforcement. We want a meter made. You guys, we have to figure out how you don't have private parking anymore so that we can use your parking at different periods of time. And I'm hopeful that this parking study is actually going to leap into that because it's been wimped out for so long. So, what exactly does parking success mean? I think we'll get you to the answer. So, then impervious surface increases. To allow more parking on Sunset Way, yes, we want to reduce the parking standards on Front Street. And we have an interesting landscape code that makes you screen all of your parking from the street that you would have on Sunset. So, I'm not exactly sure in this juggling and seemingly contradictory code-changing thing, if we're going to be successful, which in my mind is, we businesses get the parking that they need to thrive. Is that success? But we still maintain the character of our town. And so, it seems to me that if that type of language is what is in these goals and policies, then we have a better chance of creating code that leads us to success. And so, some of the language I see here, I can't understand what success is clearly. And so, I, I just would, as you go through them, because you're going to have to go through them again, I would keep asking yourself, well, what is this describing success? So, then the same thing with housing types. I went to those meetings and there was so many things about housing types. And this says, increase the number of housing types. Well, the community wasn't saying increase housing types because the type of housing they want is the older residential scale, small cozy, Old Town Issaquah housing type. Now, the varying affordabilities of the housing, accessory dwelling units, trying to maintain older stock, even if the city has to buy it so that we can allow people to stay in town, I think is what they were talking about, which the word type to me doesn't quite get there because they want a certain style, but they do want a different affordability spectrum. And so, that is how, that was my interpretation of what they said. Memorial Field, The Depot, and Rainier Trail are all the park system that the park strategic plan discusses in Old Town. So, I wouldn't just be saying Memorial Field. I would use the same thing that the strategic plan does as the core element for Old Town because we don't know what the new land is going to be. Then, we added recreation in the new economic development, whatever the tourism thing is, but I don't know what recreation is in Old Town. So, I'm not sure why we're using the word recreation unless you all are thinking of something that I'm not seeing. It seems to me that it might be restaurants, you know, great places to eat. It might be the art. It might be a variety of other things that would better fit that record, that, that thing. So, now, when you're talking about the creek, realizing that you don't just have the main stem, you have the East Fork and you have things like the Third Avenue Bridge, which frankly, is a disaster, a totally unmaintained creepy-crawly with blackberry disaster and has been forever, that could be a near-term project. Because that is basically just increasing a very used public access way in Old Town. So, those are the types of near-term projects that I think could easily be put on this. Dairy Gold and their, their sort of terrifying use of their parking lot. All of the bridges that go over all of the creeks all fit into that category. The, you know, we got ivy, blackberries, everything. So, Hatchery Grounds too, filled with invasive vegetation. And one last thing for Tola's big, huge, broad bomb of the walking trail from Squawk Valley Park to the lake, which everybody talked about, never wrote down till I think this year. We could get there faster if anybody ever talked about trying to get private property access where there's, my dentist, right over the creek, he would be perfectly fine having a trail going through his property, but no one in the city will touch him with a 10-foot pole. And that would be a way to get more, more quickly. But there's nobody on that task because there's too much else to do, so you'd have to prioritize it. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments and one question. I, I think the point that David brought up about the use of the word neighborhood-serving is interesting because it implies that it's there just to serve the neighborhood and certainly Front Street Market or any grocery store there wouldn't just serve the neighborhood. I'm wondering if we're looking for a different language. We're looking for those types of amenities that are there in the, in the neighborhood, not necessarily, it implies that it's just there just to serve the neighborhood. I'm wondering if maybe we tweak the language a little bit just to. One more.
Can we go, I mean, sorry, can we go back to the language that we're talking about? Because it, I think, I think we're talking about two different kinds of businesses.
Yeah. It's under action. Sorry. Go back down. Here we go.
Which number?
I don't know. Let's see. Is it 15? No, it's the last line in one of them. Oh, that would explain it. It's under Quality of Life, number nine. Okay, there we go. No? I mean, that's part of it, and then, yeah, Quality of Life as well. And parking. That's where it was. Sorry.
All right, where?
I don't know. There's one, there's one on number 15, under action, immediate action items. One we're talking about is number nine, under Quality of Life. Okay. Page four.
Sorry, what, I'm still, what, which?
So it's number nine.
Number nine?
Yes.
I thought I heard number four. Okay.
Page four.
Page four, okay. So, just one away. Okay. I think that the intent here was to talk about neighborhood-serving retail. I think the intent was, I mean, the food desert. I think that the market did serve the neighborhood. I did not, I don't think people came from Highlands to go to that market. I think if you were in Old Town and you needed something, or if you live in Old Town, you went to that market. I don't think it was a, a regional draw kind of a thing. And I think there are other businesses, I, I think the intent of, of this, at least around the grocery store, was to talk about services for people in the valley so they wouldn't have to go to the Highlands or wouldn't have to go down to, you know, Gilman to go to QVC or, or FC or that other one, Safeway. I don't shop a lot.
Front Street Market served people in the south end of town. That was the closest grocery store, that's six miles away. I think the, I think the loss is that, you know, there's not a grocery store within a mile of folks, and so you can't just walk. That's, that's the loss of, that's, that's the food desert. I think, unless I'm misunderstanding, David's comment was about not going to get, you're not going to get, so you can call Safeway in the Highlands a neighborhood grocery store. It doesn't just serve the Highlands. It gets people going back and forth and past it.
Right. The implication is that it's not exclusive to the neighborhood. And I don't know that anybody would disagree with, you know, you have to be a pretty small retail business, like, you know, maybe a dry cleaner, maybe a dress shop, maybe somebody, you know, tailor, somebody that's really niche and small to really be able to survive off a neighborhood. You know, everybody's capture area is going to be bigger than that. But I think the point is, you know, if you, if you could choose a home in a neighborhood that has, you know, services within a walkable distance, I think most people would say that's a better outcome than if you have to get in your car and drive to get anything. You know, I have a Starbucks, I have a grocery store, I have a cleaner, I have a bank, all within walkable distance of where I live. I think that's a great amenity to where I live. So this is intended, again, to say that part of the, part of the value of Old Town and the why people like it is because they don't have to, they didn't have to get in their car all the time to, to get their services, or at least some of their services, right? And that's, that's dwindling. And now, maybe I haven't been in Dollar Tree. Maybe Dollar Tree offers some of the things that the grocery store did. But what I would say is, the intent here was to try and capture and retain that amenity, that mixed-use amenity in Old Town. And, you know, I don't know, maybe neighborhood serving's not the right terminology. Maybe it implies something that we weren't after. But I think it was, it, it's neighborhood supportive, you know?
And, and I think there's an equity issue, too, because I think that there's, there's more folks in Old Town that don't have cars and have more limited transportation options. I mean, it's, it's not for nothing that the 554 doesn't come past my house on Squawk Mountain, right? It comes through the center of town because there's more folks who ride it. And some of it may be people who are parking there from someplace else, so that's a different problem. But I mean, I think that, I think the idea here, I think the concern with the market going away was also because the perception that there's folks in the valley for whom their transportation options are, are different than they are on Squawk, or they are in, you know, like, or Dill.
I think more people don't ride the bus on Squawk because the bus doesn't go to school.
Look, you have, you'll get no argument from me. I would love to have bus service on Squawk. But, you know, what we are always told is that it, you know, the numbers aren't, aren't supported for it.
So I don't know, I guess, given the, given that conversation and comment, I'm not sure that number nine has the right language. But I think that's just, I'm not sure what it would be. I still think it needs to be more direct about what we've lost. So anyway, I'll leave that there. One of the other comments I have is, asked earlier when we were talking about preservation of housing and not, and the teardown question, if, if there's anything in here about not being able to merge lots. Because I think one of the comments that we just heard was about preserving housing type. Housing type was about preserving character and style. There's also the affordability spectrum issue. And so I think preserving character and style, you can help accomplish that and maybe eliminate the teardown language if we prohibit merging of lots. So you can't create any more lots that are bigger than what we have.
So I've brought that up with the city attorney before, and it's not an easy question to answer. He said we'd have to look at it a little longer.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then my last one is a question that I haven't, we haven't talked about. And that is about big box redevelopment. And if the big, the big stores that we have in the Old Town area now with the big parking lots, if they redevelop, is there anything in the code that requires them to come forward to the street?
Yes. The current code requires that most of the parking go in the back, that the buildings come up to the front, that they have certain characteristics. It's all in, it's in the standards now.
The Old Town suburbs?
In the Old Town, in the Old Town design standards, yes.
Anything else? So my feeling is we had enough comments.
Is it currently on the schedule to come back?
No. It's, the Agenda Bill sends it back to council on the 15th.
So it could go...
Pardon me?
So it could go, it could be referred back. It could go on to consent to be referred back.
Is there a time sensitivity for this?
If we hit three years, we explode.
We're not there yet.
16 to 19. So we started in 16. No. You know, I think, so there's, there's going to be an ask in the mayor's budget to provide some money for implementation of some of the short-term action items coming out of this plan. So it'd be great if we could have this done this year so we can move into some of those implementation pieces next year.
Well, I'm agnostic on where to do it, but I would defer to the committee chair to bring it back.
Who's not going to be here next time?
Yes, but it's her committee.
It is.
Tola will be here next time.
I will.
Channeling me.
I think he might be here next time.
So there are enough things that we talked about, and enough changes, and enough questions, and enough additional... It wasn't just some wordsmithing that I think it would be, I don't think it is a good, I don't think it's in the shape that we want, shape isn't the right word. I think there's enough that we could discuss, but I don't think it's a good discussion for a business meeting. I think it needs to come back to committee. And so I would, I guess I would, at the level, make a motion to move this to the full council on the consent agenda and have the council action be to refer it back to Land and Shore at the November meeting.
Support that.
Support that, too.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Last item, Agenda Bill 7661, proposed amendments to Central Standards Table 4.3B, permitted land uses. This one gets to go home. Chris Hyden is here.
I'm here, you're here, we're all here. Okay. Can I move this? Find my PowerPoint. This, interestingly enough, is one of those that was not listed in the moratorium as an item to do, but it came out after that we started thinking, huh, we never talked about uses. We talked about everything that it would look like, but never talked about the uses. So this...
I think the "we" was me, just so, just so we're all clear.
Right. The big "we."
The big "we."
So as an, an update of where we've been, this originally started with the storage units and hotels. And then we finished that one with just limiting storage unit places. And then you all said, hey, let's look at all the uses. And we said, great idea, let's do that. So we brought it forward, and you looked at it, and you loved it. And it is a direct quote. So at last month's meeting, for those of you who were here, that I guess was only Tola, so he'll be able to do the truth.
Once again.
The truth piece, is there were three items you asked us to follow up on. And the first one was to clarify the small, medium, and large category of general retail that PPC wanted, but because they're not economic development experts, they had no idea what square footage would be, small, medium, and large. So we came back to the experts, and we figured out what that would be. And that's now listed in the proposal. We also were requested to clarify how a non-conforming use would be allowed to build. And the, the interesting part on that is that when we, when we approved Central in 2013, most all of the buildings were now non-conforming. So they've had non-conforming buildings for several years now. But this would be adding on to be a non-conforming use. So we, we have in the packet how that affects... Do you need me?
No, I'm sorry. I just need my notes.
Oh. I apologize. Do I have your keys?
Oh, my notes.
Okay.
I apologize.
No worries. And so we'll come back to that one later, but that, that's in your packet. And also, there was a request, almost a fear that are all the uses that are in the standards table, are they all defined somewhere? And you had many, many pages in your packet this time to show you that, yes, in fact, all of the uses are, are defined. So that was a good find, that they all were. To go a little deeper into the three, this is the small, medium, and large. And the small, as you can see, is up to 3,000 square feet. Is that blurry? And that would be allowed in all zones in Central. And the medium is 3,001, up to 10,000 square feet. And that's allowed in all zones. And you'll see a little footnote 10 that says, this size general retail is only permitted in the two zones, in mixed-use residential and village residential, when there's more than one tenant that occupies the 10,000. Because it makes it a lot smaller in scale and feeling when there's many in the 10,000, let's say, than if there's just one big 10,000. So that's what that footnote is for, is to kind of help us with the size of that. And then large is greater than 10,000, which is only allowed in urban core, mixed-use, and intensive commercial. Are there any questions on?
Yeah, where, the footnote 10, where, where did that general idea come from? That more than the one tenant?
I will...
So as we talked it through, a single user, it's 10,000 square feet. That's more along the lines of a big box, like what Lazy Boy is.
Is that 10,000?
Yeah. And so, and so, you know, the, if you think about that size of a use, they're drawing from a bigger market area. So you have more cars, the parking lots are bigger. If you think about the, where the Taco Time is on 221st, so not the Taco Time itself, because it's standalone, but the, kind of the glom-together retail uses that are, at south?
Yes.
East, south, south of that, that square footage is 10,000 square feet as well. And so it feels very much different because it's a bunch of smaller business spaces. The parking areas are going to be about the same, but they might be distributed differently. And so as we thought about this and the impact, and if you could think about those two going into, like, the Confluence neighborhood, one of them didn't work for us and the other did. So if it's a single user, we felt like that was out of character with the scale of those two neighborhoods because they're smaller scale. But if they were smaller spaces, maybe the building is the same size. But if it's demised into smaller spaces, it seemed like that was a better fit.
No more questions on small, medium, and large? Okay. The non-conforming use piece, this is right out of the IMC because Central doesn't talk about non-conforming uses. Talks about the structures, but not about the uses, so you go back to 18. And the good news is that they can rebuild a use that's been destroyed, you know, through a natural event, you know, heaven forbid, fire, flood, whatever. And there's a percentage of how, how they do it and not to make it more, any more non-conforming. And we went out to the, the uses that were limited because that was also a request from the commission, committee last time. And we talked to Issaquah Cedar and Lumber because we talked to the folks, the building material, storage and sales, boat building, sales and repair, and distribution. Because those were the three uses that we were proposing to limit that have existing uses now in Central. So we went out and talked to the folks there to see if they had issues, questions, comments, if they wanted to come in and talk with us. And those that we did talk to was Issaquah Cedar and Lumber, BMC West, Home Depot, Bakes Marine, and FedEx. And as you might recall, Lowe's had already sent us a comment letter, so we already have had a discussion with Lowe's. And generally, they, there were no issues that the, the managers and owners mentioned. Cedar, Issaquah Cedar and Lumber wanted more information to just try to understand it all. And Home Depot was wondering if they add to their building to have a tool rental place, if that would be an issue. And we said, no, it wouldn't be an issue because that's, they're just using their landscape area and making it a tool rental place. So, so everyone seemed to be okay with this. They're, they didn't see any problems. So we felt really good that we reached out to them all. And we told them all that they were welcome to come tonight and talk to you all. But no one seemed super excited to do that. They said they were just fine with where things were going, and they didn't feel that they needed to tell you that. So we said, well, we'll tell you that. So, so that was a really good thing that, that happened. And again, all, the uses are defined. So I wasn't sure what else to say about that other than we did find them all, and we were happy that we did find them all. Are there questions?
It's not, it's not really on uses, but it's on...
Okay.
Sort of is, actually. So on the accessory dwelling units, there is, there was a change to that permitting.
The ADUs? Okay.
I think so. It may have been an earlier change, but it's a crossed-out P for some of the areas. And it's, it's in an area where, so I wondered about that land use. Is it possible to have, I mean, it seems to me it would be possible to have an accessory dwelling unit accessory to, like, a multi-unit home.
The code now says that it... The code now says that if you're, I think if you're a duplex, each of them can have an accessory dwelling unit. I'd have to think about that one. But I think the reason that it's out in destination retail is that whole zone comes out of Central, so you'll notice that whole column is, all the Ps are removed. But I think accessory dwelling unit in mixed-use, there aren't that many single families that you could actually have one in. So we thought it seemed odd that you would be able to put an accessory dwelling unit in where we're saying you can't really have, that there's a lot of density in that zone, and it just seemed like it would be difficult to even find a place to have an ADU.
So it has to be ownership, right? I mean, so rental is multifamily, and that would just be an extra apartment. But under ownership, you know, if you think about like stacked flat condos, which is what we envisioned, like in the urban core and in much of Central, you know, demising a condominium into something that has an ADU in it as well, that's difficult because you start to run into issues like, how do you get a separate access point? So I don't think we're not wanting to encourage ADUs. I think as we thought about how they would be configured, given the residential we think we're going to get in Central, it didn't seem likely.
Right. And if you look up to the next part of the chart that's all residential, we took out, or we're proposing to take out dwelling, single-family, two attached, out of urban core and mixed-use, and also dwelling, single-family, three to four attached. We're taking those out of urban core and mixed-use. So it seemed, if those were coming out, then the accessory dwelling unit should come out as well, because we're taking out the very places where you'd be able to have one. And the reason PPC chose or recommended to take those out is they thought if you put in that kind of residential, you're not getting the densities that you need in those two zones. And the administration agreed with them. When we saw that recommendation, we said, wow, that really does make sense for those two zones.
Right. So it was partly a question about if it's, if an accessory dwelling unit can be to a multifamily, because multifamily is still allowed.
Right. But as Keith said, it'd be hard to get your separate access.
It'd just be another apartment. I mean, you'd just create a studio, it would be a studio apartment, right?
Right.
And so, yeah, so I think it's not discouraging small units, they just wouldn't be ADUs.
Right. Okay. Other questions? Okay.
All right, we're ready for public comment? No?
Wow.
No public comment? All right.
I don't want to write none.
So, seems to me this is probably ready to move forward. Oh, Vicky?
I have a question about the construction. I know that you have had a number of previous discussions about all of these. So we, I think that there's hardware stores, there's construction, and there's different size of stores. So I wondered if you could summarize the rationale for not allowing the larger...
The building materials and storage?
Yeah, the building materials, other than the ones that are, will be non-conforming.
Right. And I think the thought was that they usually take up so much room that to use the scarce area that we have left in Central to have the housing and the jobs that we're hoping for, that because that takes so much land, and we already have several in town, that that would be one that maybe we don't want a new one, is what the logic was. Because we have them.
We have them.
And we have them. Not to put too fine a point on it, but that was the logic.
But something, so something like a hardware store would be allowed.
So a hardware store is of a scale that's way more, I think, appropriate for Central than a building materials. You know, the building materials stores are geared towards new development and improvements by homeowners. And so anybody that's using those are having to drive to that location and then drive back to wherever they're going, because the origin and destination are probably not going to be in Central. So from a scale standpoint, and as Trish mentioned, I think just a land intensity standpoint, it's a very vehicular-oriented use, which doesn't really jive with, I think, our vision for Central.
Okay. I guess I would move to, or this back to the full council with recommend, recommendation by Land and Shore that it is adopted. And I would also like to see it put on consent.
What was the last part?
On consent.
Consent.
So, but this is something that came from a regular, a discussion at full council, right? So...
Pull it down.
Well, I'm just talking through it, right? I'm not saying I think for sure one or the other. It just seems like if it's something that the other, of course, many of the council members have guest hosted in this committee. Only Bill probably hasn't seen it in the last several months. But you're right, somebody can pull it down if they want to pull it down. I just think the general thing is that like if it came out of a discussion in council, oftentimes we say things should come back for conversation in council. But you know me, I'm happy to put things on consent and let people pull them down.
Okay.
So I second the motion.
Okay. All right, there you have it.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's sort of a miracle.
It is. It's a holiday miracle.
For Halloween. Do anything else before we go to the order for the committee? All right, then we are adjourned.
Okay. And next committee meeting is scheduled for the 1st of November.
Yeah, I need to have...
The first. So if Old Town goes...